Good evening. I'd like to call the City of Mount Vernon City Council Meeting for May 25th, 2022 to order. The time is now 7:01. Would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Councilmember Beaton?
Is excused this evening?
Councilmember Rocksmith?
Here.
Councilmember Correia?
Here.
Councilmember Hudson?
Here.
Councilmember Bolz?
Here.
Councilmember Mullinart?
Here.
Councilmember Morales?
Here.
Before we go into a consent agenda, there is a need for the council to take a brief executive session. So I'm going to ask our city attorney if you would please call that session.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd invite the city council and the mayor to enter into an executive session to discuss with legal council matters relating to enforcement action, litigation, or potential litigation to which the city, the governing body, or a member acting in an official capacity is or is likely to become a party when public knowledge regarding such discussion is likely to result in either adverse legal or adverse financial consequence to the city pursuant to RCW 4231-10 subsection 1i. And moreover, to discuss issues related to collective bargaining sessions, planning or adopting strategy or positions related to collective bargaining, which is exempt from the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant to RCW 4231-40 subsection 4. The time for executive session shall be 10 minutes, and then we will reconvene back into regular session.
All right. With that, we're going to excuse council into executive session at 7:02. For those of you that are here in the audience, we're going to disappear for 10 minutes, and we'll come right back. So please bear with us. All right. I'd like to reconvene the city council meeting, City of Mount Vernon. It is now 7:12. Before we proceed with the rest of our agenda, I think, considering what's happening in a town called Uvalde, Texas tonight, which is really the size of Anacortes, all I think I would say is I'm hoping that we can all focus on the world that we want our children to live in, rather than divisions, fighting, politics, et cetera. And I'm thankful that we live in a city like Mount Vernon, where our council and our mayor are very much nonpartisan and work to the benefit of our community. But it's still a heartbreaking thing to think about in another community tonight. So I wanted to move on from there. Consent agenda tonight is the approval of items A, B, C, D, and E. This is council meeting minutes, payroll checks, wire transfers, claims, and approval of agreement 4230 and 4231.
I'll move for approval of the consent agenda.
Thank you. Motion by Mary and a second by Ives. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Under reports tonight, committee reports, first up is Finance and Parks and Enrichment Services Committee. This is council member Mary Hudson. Mary?
Thank you, Mayor. We met tonight just before this meeting. The first item on our agenda was an update from our finance director, Doug Bluski. The first thing we talked about was investment activity. Just a few highlights. The city ended 2021 with over 38 million in cash and investments, which is a 4.5 million increase from 2020. Interest rates have decreased in the last few years. That's caused a decrease in interest revenues from investments. The city's investment portfolio is still healthy. And Doug went over the details of the current investment portfolio. Then we moved on to our utility funds, reserve update. Fund balance reserves were discussed for all of our utility and equipment rental funds. Even though some went up and some decreased, overall, the actual fund reserves came in very close to our projected budget estimates. And then, always the good part, revenue updates. Sales tax revenues for May came in at an all-time high of $864,797, bringing the total for 2022 to 3.7 million. Remember those May, what we got is only is revenues through March. So we're still waiting for April tulip season to come in. So look forward to more really good numbers. Our TBD, Transportation Benefit District, revenues were 162,251 in April. And that brings our total this year to 668,361. And REIT, which is real estate excise taxes, 1 and 2 revenues, were 192,522, bringing the total year-to-date collection to 546,818. It's a little bit lower, but that's a very flexing fund. So we see ups and downs all the year. Then we moved on to Parks and Enrichment Services, through Director Burner. She talked to us about a letter we received from a property owner on South LaVenture Road offering to deed some property back to the city. The property is 2.63 acres and has been determined that the entire property is encumbered by wetlands, making it fairly worthless to the owner for future development. And that's from the owner. The city staff reached out to our biologist, Dr. Lee, to review the wetland delineation. And he determined that the site is not a candidate for our ecosystem alternative program. So there's little potential in terms of critical area functions. We asked, the staff wanted to know how we wanted to move forward. Since we have had two council members absent at our committee meeting, we asked to put that back on another agenda so that all of our council can weigh in on that. The next item we talked about was the YMCA agreement. We, a couple of years ago, can't remember when, 2019, 18? The council approved a gift, not a gift, approved money to the YMCA program as they were using, building their new facility. And the city agreed to pay $500,000 over 10 years, basically, in lieu of things back that we could give back to our community, so we're not gifting public funds. Well, the YMCA has come back to us and saying that they're not really able to meet the requirements of the agreement. So we have a balance owing with them. They owe us some gift certificates, this is how we're going to do it, move forward with that. It's like we're going to get gift certificates for families, seniors, individuals, and senior singles, so that we can clear off the balance owing, basically, from them to us and make that, you know, like a zero balance at that point. And we're going to talk about some ideas on how we, if, how the council would like to move forward with the other money that we had at one point promised to the Y for their new facility, but trying to figure out a way that we can actually help them with many of their programs. So something we're going to keep talking about as a council, because it's a pretty big decision for us to make. At that point, we were pretty much out of time, so we had another item on our agenda that we're going to put off to another meeting. So we adjourned at 6:56.
All right. Thank you, Mary. Next up is Public Safety Committee Report and Development Services Report. And council member Marcos is going to take care of both for us.
All right. Thank you. We're going to start with our Public Safety Committee meeting, which was held on May 4th, right here in council chambers. We started off with a presentation by our fire chief, Brian Bryce. He really just gave us some updates on where we're at with the remodel of Station 3. For those that don't know, we've got some needs at both Stations 2 and 3. Council Blue Station 1 needs to be replaced, but we don't have the funding for that at this point in time. So we want to do some upgrades at Stations 2 and 3. We've actually got a revenue stream that comes back to us through FEMA for our ambulance transport. They kind of make up the difference for what we charge and what we actually get paid. FEMA is making that up to a fairly nice sum of money. So it's given us a revenue stream to service the debt, to be able to do the updates at Stations 2 and 3. So the designs are in place. We're ready to go out to bid. We're waiting for some bids to come back. Once those come back, council will take action to issue a bond using the funds that we're getting from FEMA to service the debt. So it's not going to cost taxpayers any dollars or any money. And it provides us the needs for our firefighters at Stations 2 and 3. So we're just kind of moving forward with that. He gave us some updates on that. We're going to be replacing our ladder truck. That's about two years out. They're spec-ing that out now. It'll, the order will be placed once it's all specked out. But it's going to take about two years to complete that ladder truck. Of course, part of that has to do with supply chain issues that we're currently experiencing across the country. But it takes time to build a ladder truck, too. And every municipality has their own specifications on what they need for a ladder truck. Mount Vernon is unique to itself with a lot of the different buildings. We've got the President's Hotel. We've got a number of apartment complexes. And we have to make sure that we have an apparatus that'll meet the needs in the event that we have to utilize it in any one of those facilities. So they're working on the specs on that. They'll get that out. We'll get a bid back, and we'll place the order. We then moved on to kind of our, well, we moved on to the police department. Chief Chris Kamik, our police chief, gave us an update on the command vehicle, they call it a command vehicle project update. There's been, probably for 15 years or so, there's been a request in our capital facilities, I guess our capital budget, kind of wish list for a particular vehicle that they can use for incident command. And it's just never, the funding has never been there. We've been talking with Chief Kamik, trying to figure out how we can find the funds to provide the fire department, the police department with this vehicle that they so desperately need. Chief Kamik got kind of creative and went and talked to Chief Bryce in the fire department. And they decided that they could utilize a vehicle in both departments. So we could utilize one vehicle. It'll serve the needs of two different departments. So the fire chief and the police chief are working together. They've just about got that vehicle specked out. They're going to be putting that out for bid. They'll come back to council, and we're going to find some funding to provide that much-needed vehicle. Then we went into some discussions about our Linebury Commons project. That's going to be a theme probably through a lot of these committee meetings. We're looking at the progress we're making forward as far as the design and the features of it. We get updates almost weekly on costs. As you are well aware, costs continue to rise. We're seeing that with the project. So we're trying to figure out ways to complete the funding that we need to finish the project. Mayor Bedrow is kind of relentless. Go ahead and laugh. She's kind of relentless. She's on to every state and federal politician there is out there, every county politician there is out there. She's trying to squeeze every dime out of them that she can. And she's doing a great job with that. There's some things that council is going to have to take some actions on. So she's going to need our help. She can't do it all on her own, though she's trying. But we're just moving forward with that project. The last cost, if we were looking and get everything we wanted, is about $56 million, which is substantially higher than what we had been working with just three weeks ago. There's some contingencies in there that'll bring that down. And until we actually go out to bid, we won't know what those costs are going to be. I believe council's kind of given direction to city staff to go ahead and put the bid package together. Let's get it out to bid. We should see our bids back about mid-July, if I'm correct.
Close to August, but yeah, almost.
July, August. It's summertime. But we'll get those bids back. We'll have a true cost of what it's going to be to complete that project. And then we'll take the necessary steps to fund that and move forward with it. And with that, we adjourn our Public Safety Committee meeting at 7:10. So we'll move on to our Development Services. You're going to hear some more about library, if you want. We started off with some project updates from our planning director, Rebecca Lowell. There's a couple of exciting projects going on in the city. There's a new, it's a multi-use facility that'll be going in at, is it LaVenture and 3? Oh, excuse me, on LaVenture. It's a three-story mixed-use apartment complex, basically. So you'll have commercial on the bottom, residential on top. And there are three permanent low-income housing units in that. So those three units are committed for the life of that building to be, to provide low-income housing amongst those 66 units. So that's kind of an exciting project to see coming along. And the development and the growth that is going to come with that. And also the, both the mixed market rate rents along with the low-income rents. It's kind of a theme that we, as a council, have said, if we're going to do some, if we're going to make some exceptions and some rules, we need to have a public benefit for that. That public benefit would be providing some low-income housing. This particular developer said, yeah, we want to do that. So they've committed 11 units for the life of the building. So that's kind of a trade-off that was made. Well, the agreement was done years ago, a couple of years ago with council. We're seeing some of those developers come in and take advantage of that. So we're pretty excited to see that. There is a 301 South First Street. That building was just purchased. It appears that there's going to be a glass-blowing facility or studio down below, and at least long-term. And there's going to be some, or excuse me, some office buildings upstairs. So there's some growth going on, and some exciting things going on downtown. Kind of need to see some of the artist community move in there in glass-blowing. For me, it's always an exciting thing to witness. So we're excited about that project. We had a discussion about 1406. 1406 is some sales tax revenue that... Fourteen oh six is, uh, some sales tax revenue that, uh, the city has decided to commit those funds to, um, Martha's Place, which is our permanent supportive housing project that we're partnered with Community Catholic Services and Skagit County with. Uh, we've committed, committed our fourteen oh six money, um, to that project, uh, to help, help, uh, with the operations of that on an annual basis. However, there's a couple of years lag, so we've got about two years with the fourteen oh six money. Council decided that, that we wanna put that out to some of our non- nonprofit, um, partners in the community. Uh, but how do we do that fairly? So, we directed staff to put together a questionnaire, um, that we can put out to the, the nonprofits. That, and the whole idea here is to help those, um, it's kind of those most vulnerable in our community, so with housing or, or services. Um, Peter Donovan, um, our Special Projects Coordinator, has put that together. He brought it before council, council approved that, uh, questionnaire, and Peter's now getting that out, uh, into those nonprofits, so that we can take a look, get those, um, those, uh, applications back, um, have them reviewed, a recommendation made to council on where to disburse those funds. And I think there's about a whole, a total of about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars worth of funds, uh, in that pot. So, uh, you'll see council taking action at some point in time to disburse those, um, funds that, that haven't been spent previously. We had a little discussion about what we're gonna do with the old library. Um, we know we wanna keep that as, as a city property. Uh, there's a number of needs within, in the city. Uh, you know, as the city continues to grow, we provide more and more services, and some of our departments get bigger and bigger. We just had kind of a brief overview of, of what would that look like, what could we do in there. Uh, we've talked about moving public ser- public works in there, we talked about moving our information services in there, maybe splitting, splitting it and moving two different, there, there's nothing set in stone. We're just kinda having a discussion on what's it gonna look like when we vacate that building, what can we use that for, um, that'll benefit, benefit the city. So, we just had kind of a, a general discussion on, on, you know, what's it gonna look like when we're, when that facility's available. Um, our, our Library Director, Isaac Huffman, kinda talked to us a little bit about some philanth- philanthracy- philanthropists? Yeah. Thank you!
You're welcome.
Um, opportunities that, that folks might be able to participate in, um, to help support the library. Um, again, nothing's set in stone, we've talked about, uh, making some pavers available for people to purchase, um, to get your name engraved on them, have them on the upstairs, um, kind of loft area. Um, we've discussed some naming opportunities for, for some big donors. Um, we did decide that we don't want any corporate sponsors, we'd like these to be families or individuals. Uh, Sonia Baird, um, has a, in, in her gift to the city, kinda said that she wanted the children's reading room, um, so there'll be some recognition for her there. Um, she, for those that, that aren't aware, she left a, a nice sum of money for a new library. Um, that total now is, is about a million dollars, um, with the interest and things that have been accumulated over that. So, um, that's going to be going to the project, um, we'll have some recognition for her. Um, but there, again, nothing's set in stone, it's just some discussion on some opportunities that are out there. And I'm sure the public's gonna have some opportunity to have input on that also. And again, we had some more discussions about how we're gonna fund the, uh, the library, and, and that's gonna be a continual theme again, is throughout our, our meetings. Um, this is a big project, it's gonna be the biggest project, um, ever to take place in Skagit County. Um, and, and there's a continual ebb and flow of, of, you know, what's the project gonna look like? What's the dollar amount, what are the new costs, um, what are the new cost estimates? And that, that's very, uh, flu- fluid as we go through because, you know, steel prices go up, lumber prices go up, this goes down, that go- so, we don't know. And again, until we get it out to bid and actually know where we're at, uh, we're only looking at, at what are our options? If, this is the worst-case scenario, how do we fund it here? If we get the, the bids in and we find out that it's not worst-case scenario, uh, we probably have the thing completely funded. So, um, again, we just need to go out to bid, get those bids back, um, and then make some decisions, so. I know that the council's received a number of letters, um, saying, don't stop, keep going with the project. Um, this is, this is too good of a thing not to do. Um, I wanna assure, um, folks that the council wants to move forward with this. But we need to do it in a way that is, is, uh, fiscally responsible. We wanna be able to pay for the facility, so we're looking at all options that we have out there as far as what are our funding sources? What kind of debt can, can the city actually service? So, we have certain revenue streams that, that come in, uh, every year, that we can help service the debt with. We can commit those funds and we can, we can pay the debt, but only to a, to a limit. Um, so, we have to, we have to look at that. We're looking at the other, um, grant, uh, sources out there. I see the mayor's got seventy-five EV chargers, advanced vertical solar arrays, he's got a whole bunch of signs out here. Those are all grant opportunities, those are to all places that we're able to get grant funding from. So, as we move forward, we'll continue to look for those opportunities to, to bring money into, to the project and to be able to pay the debt on the project. And we adjourned at, I believe it was seven-ten that day, no, seven fifty-eight, I'm sorry.
Thanks, Mark, thanks for doing double duty on committee chair, too, appreciate that. All right, moving on to, uh, community comments tonight. First up is the review of emails from the public, and so Peter Donovan will read any emails that were submitted, um, via the email address council@mountvernunwa.gov.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, Council, you have got mail. Uh, you've got seven emails that were sent to council@mountvernunwa.gov in the last couple of weeks. I know all of you get a lot more than that individually, but these are the, the emails that we committed to reading publicly. Uh, the first one is from Chloe Clark, and Chloe wrote today, "I write this letter urging City Council to adopt the resolutions approving the final design of the Library Commons Project and approving the purchase of the required land from Skagit County. I am an ardent supporter of the Library Commons Project, as are all of my family and friends. As a regular user of the current library, I could not be more excited for my young children to have a new library, a place for reading and discovery and community. Often, the business of local government is routine, the Library Commons is anything but that. It is an opportunity to do something great for Mount Vernon, something that you can proudly say, I did that. I helped build an amazing green building and a place for community and hundreds of parking spots and electric charging stations and a modern library for generations to come. Public libraries provide a wealth of services, create a sense of community, provide opportunities for learning, support literacy and education, and serve as a touchstone that spans generations. Certainly, this is an important fiscal component to consider. That said, there are many opportunities to close funding gaps. Philanthropic gifts, numerous grants, direct appropriation, revenue generation, like, from the charging stations, or even local tax. The reality is that delays will just increase the cost. In fact, there's considerable research showing that each tax dollar invested in public libraries returns between four and five dollars back to the community. And cities with well-used libraries have lower crime rates, higher graduation rates, and lower unemployment. The project is a bold idea for Mount Vernon, but one that will make the city more vibrant, make our downtown more welcoming, and spur business growth. Surely, we can get this done, surely, government can do something great again. I hope I can count on each of you to vote for the Library Commons Project and take a step forward in improving our community for years to come." The next email was sent from Barbara Young. "To whom it may concern, I am a senior citizen on a fixed income, but do not qualify for low income. I rarely fill my twenty-gallon cart, so certainly don't need a bigger cart. I am wondering if there are expectations for the seniors. It makes no sense to spend so much more for something I won't use. I pay nine dollars and eighty-nine cents a month for garbage, I also pay waste management for garbage. Please clarify that for me. Thank you for your attention to this matter, I know in my fifty-five, in my over fifty-five community, there are many who are asking the same question." From Dottie in Don Monroe. "Good day, as new residents of Mount Vernon, we have been delighted with so many of the wonderful reasons to live here. The library is another story. Frankly, we were surprised that the library is so small, but very impressed with the library's staff, who are very friendly and helpful. We were so excited when we learned about the Library Commons because the residents of this city deserve to have all of the many benefits this project will provide. Please do whatever you need to do to provide the necessary financing, thank you." From Hal in Hella Lee. "I understand that the cost of providing services goes up. What I object to is the removal of the twenty-gallon garbage bin. I and others are being penalized for trying to minimize the amount of garbage we generate. Seldom do we fill the twenty-gallon bin, and when we do, it is because of garbage that I pick up along the road or from the park behind our house. I noticed that both Anna Cordis and Burlington continue to offer the twenty-gallon bins, so why not Mount Vernon? With Burlington contracting with waste management, thank you." From Philip Holder. "Please move forward on the Library Commons Project. Our aging library is already a center for the, for the reading community in Mount Vernon, but lacks meeting facilities for community groups. The co-op tries to meet part of that need now, but the new library will meet the need directly and effectively. The construction of the library will bring jobs and increase commerce to the downtown area, bolster tourism, add badly-needed parking, and create a focal point for the city. Other cities have done this to great effect. This plan has been in the works for over ten years, please don't drop the ball." From Kathleen Roche-Zujco. "Hello, councilpeople. I understand some of you may be waffling a bit in your previously indicated support for the Library Commons Project. I am writing to urge you to continue your support for this project. We need bold investments in Mount Vernon to continue the excellent progress our little city has made. Please keep in mind that past investments have proven themselves to be good for Mount Vernon, specifically the new YMCA, the gorgeous and popular Riverwalk, new school buildings, and Skagit Regional Health's Independent Medical Center. We can't afford to stop investing in our city. The Library Commons is desperately needed on many levels, including bringing more visitors and visitor dollars, jobs that will be created by the project, and research shows that for every dollar of tax revenue spent, Mount Vernon will receive approximately five dollars in return value. Please continue to vote to move the Library Commons Project ahead." And finally, from Linda Allen, who notes that she was born and raised here, lived a few other places, but returned to Mount Vernon in nineteen ninety-five and ran a successful business with my husband Rich for fifteen years. Collins Office applied. Linda writes, "The new library is very important to our city for multiple reasons. It will make a beautiful entryway for our city. EV parking will attract visitors with the latest auto technology. The project will create over one hundred jobs, it has been part of the city's master plan for years. The old library was built in the nineteen fifties and needs updating. Our city has built multiple successful large projects in the past, including but not limited to the beautiful Riverwalk and YMCA. Please do not drop the ball on this project respectfully."
All right, thank you, Peter. All right, and now we have our public comments. If there's anyone here in the audience, you're welcome to make up a comment, you can step to the podium at this time. If you would please state your name and city of residence and comments for about three minutes or so.
My name's Denise Skelton, um, I am co-owner of Riverside Health Club in Mount Vernon. Um, I wanted to thank you guys for the way that you processed through the YMCA contract. It has made, it makes so much more sense to me that you are trying to relocate those funds to helping the Oasis Center or any way else that we can help those that are having a hard time in Mount Vernon. Um, some of you have been on the journey with me on that contract, and part of the reasons I had issues with it in the beginning, um, was using taxpayers' dollars to go towards direct competition to the exact same business that I do. Um, I am a supporter of the YMCA, so when I speak, I'd like to kinda section it out to say, here's the YMCA and all the wonderful things they do. You can take the pool and you can say, here's the YMCA and the wonderful things that they do with swim team, and then they run a health club business. And I pay taxes, they do not. Um, in the efforts of moving forward with any future plans or money given to them, I just kinda wanted to paint a little more of an accurate picture. Um, when that bill went through, or that, uh, contract went through, comments were made, oh Denise, you'll be fine. Um, Riverside Health Club will be fine, you guys are two very different organizations, you do very different things. Um, we lost close to thirty-five percent of our membership base to YMCA when it opened. Um, and competition is good, right, I'm all for that. So, um, that happened right before the pandemic, the pandemic hit. Um, we're a two-family-owned business, the number of privately-owned clubs in the United States are getting smaller and smaller and smaller and smaller. When the presentation was made last week, I was actually really relieved when the director said, hey, we're, we're a five-oh, we're nonprofit, but we're actually a business. And it was the first time that I was like, there's some honesty. There's a business component to what the YMCA does that directly competes against what we do. And during the pandemic, we paid our property taxes, every membership we sell has a tax, we contribute back. So, again, I'm just talking about the health, the health club portion of the YMCA. I'm not here to put down any of the great things they do. But, as City Council, as you move forward, um, I just think that we can both flourish here and do different things, but keep that in mind that I'm not corporate. You know, when we went through the pandemic, um, like I said, we're a two-family business. I had to lay off half my family members, um, including my husband, being one of them, um, my son. Um, it was a hard, it was a hard time, but at a hard time comes opportunity and growth. Um, and I'm really looking forward to kinda this next chapter in growing together, but I just ask that, as things come up with the YMCA in the future and giving them funds, that you will keep in mind that those funds go to the people that are needing it, not indirect competition with your small local business owner, which is me. So, thank you, and again, thank you for the way that you processed this contract. I'm in huge support of it, and I'm just thankful that you guys had the thought that you have and the, um, the care, and I just have a lot of respect for the work that you do here, and I'm thankful to you for it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Denise. All right, any other public comments tonight?
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
Uh, my name's Angela Spear, I live on the west side of Mount Vernon on Broadshaw Road. I am speaking here tonight as a board member of the Mount Vernon Downtown Association and as a resident of Mount Vernon. My purpose is to urge you to move ahead with the Mount Vernon Library Commons Project, shocking. Um, many have spoken and written about the value of the library and community center to all of our residents, but I'm here tonight to talk about the positive impact on the project, particularly as it relates to parking and jobs. It's no secret that our downtown business community and its visitors desperately need parking. At the last regular meeting, Ellen, our Executive Director, spoke about the many years of intention to create a parking infrastructure and our master and comprehensive plans, and the urgent need that our current and future businesses have for such a structure. These needs have not changed. And if we look at the jobs that will be created, not just the hundred and twenty-four jobs that the project will directly create, but the many more that will be indirectly created as our stores and restaurants staff up to serve the customers that will be attracted by the seventy-five EV charging stations and plentiful free parking. The new jobs that will be created by the boutique hotel condos and mixed-use commercial and residential above, as well as the additional development that will be catalyzed by the parking and amenities that the project will add. The jobs that will be created by the small batch egg production that will be permitted in the commercial kitchen, planned for the commons, which will be allowed for use as a commissary incubator kitchen. And the jobs and dollars that will be brought to our community with the two to five hundred residential units that have also been long-planned and will be brought, brought closer to fruition by the completion of the project. A nearly incalculable positive long-term ripple effect. For years, years to come, this community will be grateful for your foresight and commitment moving this project forward and moving it forward now. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Angela. All right, any other public comment tonight? All right, thank you for that. Uh, moving on, item C on our agenda is Councilmember comments, any Councilmember comments tonight? Go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, I just wanna take a moment to say that I don't wanna proceed, uh, like we are in normal times, or that this is a normal meeting, because it is not. Um, and I know we all have children in our lives, uh, that we love, and, you know, seeing yesterday's events, um, it isn't right, it isn't normal, and it's really hard to, to process. And really, you know, I really don't have any words that would provide relief. But also, I don't want to be silent on this issue either. I just hope that, that as a nation, that we can figure something out to stop this violence and this form of terrorism that I and that we have seen since Columbine to present day. Thank you.
Any other council member comments tonight? All right, thank you, Juan. Moving on to Mayor's report. I need help from all of you, and the council needs help too. So, um, I want to give Isaac, our library director, credit for this idea. So, on the screen, you see a picture. This was from our Chamber of Commerce luncheon today. And we are going to start a Twitter and Instagram campaign where we are asking for audience participation or any groups that will help us. So, we have signs that they're holding up, and those signs say, pick our, uh, pick us as a Raze Grant Project of Merit. And that's where Secretary Buttigieg could literally give us ten million dollars just because he wants to, and we would love that. There's also a multi-transit hub. There's advanced vertical solar array. There's seventy-five EV charger. These are, these are elements of our project that are submitted for a grant currently with the United States Department of Transportation. And we figured a good way to try and get attention is to, uh, take our stab at a social media campaign. So, what I'm asking for is if there's any groups, um, out there that want to participate, we have signs, we will travel, we have a phone, we'll take a picture, and you can be part of our campaign. We're going to be posting, uh, twice, perhaps three times a week, and we will be tagging various elected officials. So, Secretary Buttigieg, our congressional delegation, Senator Murray, Senator Cantwell, Representative Delbene, Representative Larson, because he might eventually be our representative because of, uh, redistricting. But we're also tagging, um, editors of news articles that have written about transportation infrastructure projects. So, we're just going to try and see how far we can get with this. So, um, let us know. You can call into the mayor's office. I think there's another, is there another slide that we added, Peter? Oh, yeah, there we go. If you would like to participate, um, we could come to Riverside Health Club and like take pictures in the dim. We could, um, come downtown to one of our businesses, or if you have a group, a service club, anything that we can show up with, we're happy to come and take pictures so you can join in and help us. So, um, and if you're on social media, if you're on Twitter or Instagram, we'll be putting out information where you can follow that, and we'll see how it goes. They announced Raze Grants in August, so we've got some work to do between now and then. Go ahead, Mark. We can take pictures at council. I think we could. What we could do is at the end of the meeting, would that be most appropriate? If anyone would like to stick around, um, through the end of our meeting, we will have you hold signs and we'll take pictures. So, that could be tonight if you'd like, so. All right. Item E tonight is in committee agenda requests. Any committee agenda request from our council members? All right, moving on. We have no unfinished business tonight. Item A in our new business tonight is a Skagit farm worker tribute. And Peter, I could read this and introduce Councilmember Corias to make some remarks. Farm workers play a very vital role in the continued prosperity of Skagit County's agricultural history as agriculture is at the heart of our community's heritage. So, Councilmember Corias had this idea that we were able to connect people to produce a short video tribute to our local farm workers. That features work from Dr. Gary Brown and artist Alfred Courier with our TV ten staff, Candy Galindo and Lori Finta, who helped out. And so, before we show the video, I would wanted to turn it over to Councilmember Corias if you'd like to say a few words.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here, and I just want to say, um, great thanks to Dr. Brown, who always was visiting our fields, seeing our farm workers' families, how they were working so hard in the tulips, um, harvest, and, and how much he was approaching them, listening their stories and their, uh, so many struggles like they, they have just to be on those fields producing or it is a part of our, our economy in our country and, and most in this community. And I just want to say a big thank you, uh, because he's, he's the, the master in this project. And I want to say thank you to Ray. Ray is another, um, owner of the farm, uh, small farm, and I know he's a great employer. And I would like to say thank you from the bottom of my heart, how great you take care of our families. It is amazing to see you, how you are doing for, um, many years in this community. And I would like to say thank you to everyone to be here, to be witness, um, how much your families work, uh, on those fields. And, uh, thank you to the mayor and Candy, because without them, this project couldn't be done. And enjoy the film and the, uh, pictures from Dr. Brown.
You know, weed, oh my gosh, so beautiful. Isn't God wonderful? I said, yeah, but you should have seen this field before I was able to do anything to it. It's easy to look at these fields. And that's what you focus on. You sit in another car and you take this grand shot, and you don't see the individuals making it possible. It was the feature Tulip Artist for Holland, and I went over and there are tulip fields were all mechanized. And as I was trying to find inspiration, there were just flat lines of color. And that's when I realized that I was the painter of people, not a painter of tulips. So much of what's done here has to be done by hand. And these folks are good. You, you watch them, as I have with a photographic eye going along these, these roads and their hands. I, I don't think I could make my hands move that fast. And, and it was exactly what to do. Farm workers are still labor, just like a farmer and electrician. The people that work with us, they're from south of the border, they come with valued skills and the willingness to work. They grew up on farms. They know how farms work. They're, they're familiar with the type of work that goes on here, and so they come and they're ready to go. If it wasn't for people that aren't supposed to be here doing our farm work, we wouldn't have anything. Thank you very much for coming to work every day and doing the job that you do.
So, um, first of all, I, I want to say, um, uh, Angela, I appreciated your comment at the start of the meeting. I feel very fortunate to be, to be part of this, um, presentation. So, the agenda will be, I'm going to just say a few words. First of all, thanking Ellen Anne for participating, Ray DeRees, uh, for providing access. Andrew Miller and Brent Rusen also. There have been a number of other farmers that I, I run into on the west side. This indeed is really a community. And, and the video, uh, Elle said he began to realize that he was a painter of people. And, um, and you'll see that throughout this brief presentation. People is what it's about. Community is what it's about. I've lived on the west side since nineteen seventy-seven among the farmland and, uh, gosh, maybe it was five, six years ago. I was having problems with my bike. I had to stop, and this guy pulled up in a Dodge caravan. It was kind of a rainy, crummy day, and he rolled the window down. He said, you need any help? And I said, no, I think I've got it. And I, that's the first time I met Ray. And, uh, I didn't know his name at the time. I came home and, and told Sue what, what had happened, because there were other cars that passed me by. But before you, you left Ray, you, you said, we need to take care of one another. And, uh, I think that's a philosophy that, that this community shows. So, I, I thank Candy and Lori for putting the, the video together, taking the time to interview us. Aaron Wagner, who helped with the presentation, you're going to see. Susan Brown for finding music that accompanies this. Because it's not just the words we say and the pictures we see, but the music that helps bring feeling into what is meaningful for a human experience. We, Elle, uh, if you want to say a few words, now would be a good time.
I yielded Gary Brown. I've been here about thirty years now, a little over thirty years. And, uh, and I originally went out into the fields to, um, to, uh, keep my drawing skills up. I, I taught art in Chicago at a, an art school, and, and I didn't have the models here. And, uh, so after a few years, I started to know some of the field work, fieldhands, and, um, and they're just beautiful people. And, uh, and, and there are more and more that are here in this area. And so, I would encourage all of us to become more assertive and to, uh, welcoming them into the community. And, uh, um, and that's all. There's a lot of, uh, things that you can do if you're interested to volunteer. And here's a seat of, uh, different, um, um, organizations and what have you, uh, like from Iris to, um, this Skagit, uh, or the, um, the Farm Workers' Center, um, and so on, but that's all. I just encourage you to get involved, and thank you very much.
Ray, can I put you on the spot or? This guy is, uh, uh, Ray, Ray is amazing, and you'll see some photographs of, of his farm. But, um, you really do feel like a community there. I can, uh, share a couple stories, Candy, if you want to. I'll with, um, okay, so here we go. Let's go back up to that one. This one is specifically for Susan, because I like rhubarb pie. And right now, uh, on Ray's farm, they're harvesting rhubarb. Absolutely gorgeous. And, uh, uh, being with the, the individuals in the field there, uh, it's just wonderful. It's been a utterly wonderful experience. This guy jumps from side to side milking cows faster than I've ever seen. This is actually my favorite tulip, uh, image of the last season. And, uh, it's meaningful for me. The tulips and the workers in the background that really make absolutely everything possible. We've got, uh, we'll zip through here a little bit and get into one of the first stories here, and then I'm going to go back. One of the times, um, I went out, uh, about three weeks ago, four weeks ago, near the end of the tulip season. This was a crummy tulip season, by the way. It didn't have the nor, the normal fog that we like. From a photographic standpoint, you like that, you like light. This was a morning that was going to be absolutely perfect. I got up really early. I was at one field taking some photographs, and then I moved to Calhoun Road, which runs east-west. And there was a field of red tulips, uh, yellow tulips, very dramatic. And if you got there early enough and you went out along the red field, you could see Mount Baker eventually, when the fog would lift, and a red barn. It was perfect photogenically. And there were probably twenty cars on the north side of Calhoun Road. There were photographers walking out into the field. Tripods were being set up. They were talking. I was sitting in the car finishing coffee, kind of looking, but the fog was so thick, you couldn't see anything. You really couldn't see anything. And then the sun started coming up, so you get this early morning golden light that is magic. If you're a photographer, you want that. And I started noticing there were a number of cars pulling off into a working, uh, worker's parking lot on the, uh, east side, just, just before Beaver Marsh Road. And people were walking out on the road, as you can see, and they were going out to start to glean this tulip field. So, I grabbed my camera. I ran to the south end of Calhoun, or just, you know, the, the other side of the road. I've got twenty-five photographers on the north side, sitting there talking, sipping coffee, waiting for the fog, waiting for the scene, right? They couldn't see anything. This was unfolding, and this was the scene. And watching these people move and the mist change and the flowers gently sway, I mean, that was just pure magic. That's, that's what you live for as a photographer, are these moments. And some, and, and, you know, in painting, you have to use your imagination. Sometimes you fill in the scene, but as you're painting, as Elle probably tells you, sometimes in the painting yourself, you change your mind, you'll change your character, you'll change lighting, whatever. As a photographer, you walk out and you're just given the image, right? I can't plan what I'm going to get. So, every one of these things is a gift. This morning, I was watching people harvest tulips. This was about six years ago. Off Beaver Marsh Road. And, uh, later on, uh, later that, that morning, I, I shot a number of shots, went home, downloaded them in the computer, looked at them, looked at them again about a week later. And then about three months later, when I was doing a review, I, I, you know, I realized, what does this person have on his cap? Yes, America. And, um, you know, this council meeting is, is just a perfect example of why someone would want to be here, why they'd want to be proud to be here. And, and the way many of these people feel. The next story here. This is Ray DeRees Farm. This is the central area. Every morning around, uh, eight o'clock, uh, eight o'clock sharp, right? There, there's a meeting, and there's anywhere from, you know, maybe twenty-five to forty, sometimes a little bit more than forty workers that gather around this big circle. They start off with exercises. You gotta do your hand exercises, try to touch your toes, move your torso. I, I'm not so sure he's going to compete with the YMCA, but, uh, people get moving together as a community. Then he moves into the center, and, and maybe you talked about the weather, talked about some element of society. I, I, he had to tell the difference between a crescent wrench and a hammer one day. I, I think he observed people using them a little differently. But this one particular day, he held up a box, and you see that white box. And he said that one of the workers had a friend who lost an eight-year-old daughter just the day before. She was at school. She injured her leg, lower part of the body. They rushed her to the hospital, and, and they couldn't save her. She died. And this was a donation box. And, uh, so he was going to put it in the, the barn where you check in and you check out, the, the time machine. And people could donate there. And then there was a, uh, a pause for about five or ten minutes. And then he said, no, I've got some good news. And he named two of the workers who were getting married. And because they had announced their marriage, they felt like they had to take some time, a week or ten days. They were going to go away, so they wouldn't be working, but when they came back, we were going to have a party. But when they came back, we were going to have a party. And you could see their little smiles and reams of laughter. So it really is a community. And when he held the box up, he said, "On one side, it's in English. On the other side, it's on Spanish. In Spanish, in the center is the picture of the little girl that passed away." And then he helped for funeral expenses would be needed. And I was thinking metaphorically, isn't that... What if you had a box with 1,000 sides, right? And 1,000 languages? And what if that little box was our world or was our country? You know, we're all... We've all come here from somewhere. And by the way, if you put... I learned if you put cookies and banana bread there, the donations go better. At the end of one of the mornings, this truck pulled in, had a number of fresh food, a worker on one end, and then a little quote on the other side of the truck. "Eating is an agricultural act," by Wendell Berry. The very top story here, we had to do a different sequence. One morning, Kevin Hartman and I went out. We had permission with Washington Bulb to go out in the fields. We always try to introduce ourselves to the workers. Many of them may not want their photographs taken because of their face, and they just, I mean, who knows what it will be. We feel a little intrusive, so try to smile, often offer pictures. If we take their photograph, we'll come back the next day with some pictures. And we were waiting, and there was an old school bus there that a lot of the workers would go into when it's really rainy or inclement weather. And we noticed there was a bird flying around in a school bus from the front to the back. And Kevin and I sat there and kind of looked at one another and looked at the bird and waited and drank our coffee a little bit more. And then a couple more workers came in, and this fellow started getting his jacket on. He looked over, he saw the bird, he went over, he opened the door, and he walked towards the back of the bus, holding his sweatshirt, got the bird in the corner, grabbed him, came to the front of the bus. And I grabbed my camera, and I told him to wait there for a minute. And he held the bird, and he let him go. And the striking part about this, when I was talking to Candy and Lori, they threw a question at me. They said, "Why didn't you do that?" And I had to think for a while. I'm not sure. Maybe I don't feel that confinement, right? Maybe I didn't identify with it quite as strongly as maybe, you know, an individual who does feel confined in a way. So what we should probably do next, Candy, is come up and we'll go on. I'll take you into west Mount Vernon, into the farmland for a while. And so try to imagine what it's like with a light wind. Sometimes there's a little music in the field if one of the workers...
Thank you to Councilmember Curtis for asking for this as an agenda item and for collaborating with Dr. Brown and Candy and Mr. Currier. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. All right, back to our agenda items. So item B is a Skagit PD update. That will be postponed. Unfortunately, there is some sickness going around, so we will reschedule Mr. Sidhu coming up after that. Item C tonight is a public hearing regarding our draft redistricting plan, and Peter Donovan is here to present this item.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to whoever put me on the agenda after that. That was very cool. And this is less cool. I have way fewer birds to release. The 2022 redistricting is upon us. With the 2020 census numbers out, the city is required to review its voting districts. And of course, council knows that we call our voting districts wards here in the city of Mount Vernon. And each ward that we have, each of the three, and you know also that they're represented by two council members each and one council member that represents all three wards. In 2010, when the census data came out, each of those wards was balanced for its population growth. But the population growth has clearly changed in the last 10 years, and unfortunately, that population growth does not disperse evenly amongst those three wards. And so we have to adjust. We have to rebalance them. And we do that to comply with state regulations that require us to make our districts compact, geographically contiguous, and balanced in population. So how do we know what our target population should be within each ward? It's super complicated, high-level math. We take our census, latest census population data that tells us we have 35,219 residents, and wait for it, we divide by three. And that gives us 11,740 residents for an ideal target population within each of our three wards. That's clearly not going to happen precisely and perfectly. It never does. We're allowed to have a 5% variance there, which comes to about 500 about... It comes to 587 residents within each ward, so we can have more or fewer than 587. So looking at how things are right now with our new census data, we're looking at the black font here where it says current population. We see that Ward 1 is 2.76% below our ideal population of 11,740 residents, which is within our allotted 5% margin of deviation. So that's good. Ward 1 is just fine as its boundaries are currently drawn. But take a look at Wards 2 and 3, also in the black font there. We see that Ward 2 is far below our ideal population, and Ward 3 has 9.1% too large of a population beyond our ideal. So both are outside of our plus or minus 5% deviation, and so we are required to make some adjustments. In this case, the adjustment is fairly simple. We just need to adjust the boundaries between Ward 2 and 3 so that Ward 3 has fewer residents and that those residents are then taken from Ward 3 and added to Ward 2. The blue font shows you how our proposed plan to change the boundaries of Wards 2 and 3 could bring all of our wards into compliance, thereby balancing the population of each ward to within 5% of our 11,740 population ideal. So your next question, of course, is who gets impacted by this boundary change and what area is going to need to be moved from Ward 3 to Ward 2 to balance our population distribution? And I love your questions, and I thank you for tracking with me. The red circle there is indicating the white area, the neighborhoods there, that currently sit within the boundaries of Ward 3. This is the area that the city, at the recommendation of our contracted demographer, is proposing that we move from Ward 3 to Ward 2. And we'll zoom in on that area, and you can get a closer look at the boundaries. And you can see East Division Street to the north, East Broadway Street to the south, Digby Road to the west, and South Wa Road to the east. And this simple adjustment to the city's existing wards is really all that needs to be done for the city to meet the required population targets, given the new 2020 census data. So following council introduction and a presentation that we had on this proposal on May 11th, public notice of the proposed change was posted on May 16th. Residents within that impacted area were mailed notice on May 12th. A description of the proposal, along with maps, and a link to the council video presentation, has been available on the city's website as well to help answer any questions that may come up. I will tell you that no written comments have been received regarding this matter. And with that, staff is recommending that we hold a public hearing this evening and no immediate action from council after that. The plan would be for us to consider any input that we may get, and we would bring the plan back for final approval at your Wednesday, June 8th council meeting.
All right. Any questions for Peter before we open the public hearing? All right. Thank you. With that, we'll open the public hearing regarding the proposed redistricting plan. Is there anyone who would like to speak on this particular item? You're welcome to step forward at this time. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. All right. Thank you. Any questions before Peter walks away? All right. We'll be back before you then in a few weeks. Thank you. Thank you, Peter. Item D tonight is the approval of an agreement with Mount Vernon Police Services Guild. Our Human Resources Director, Erin Kader, is here to present this item to council. Erin?
Good evening. Again, I'm here regarding the Commissioned Police Guild Collective Bargaining Agreement. This agreement covers 38 employees currently. The agreement expired last year, December 31st. We began negotiations the end of last year, but because of the CPI numbers that were coming in last year and because of the comp jurisdictions that we compare ourselves to have not settled or had not settled when we were going through negotiations, we decided we would settle on a one-year contract, bring the police guild up to on par with the jurisdictions for last year's numbers, do a one-year agreement, and then go into negotiations after everybody else settles again, and CPI numbers kind of hopefully even out. So what we agreed to was, again, a one-year contract for this year alone. It'll be a 4% increase on January 1st, 2022, and a 3% increase on July 1st, 2022. It kind of breaks up that cost. It has a $145,000 impact on the budget. And with that, I'm recommending that you authorize the mayor to sign the contract.
All right. Any questions for Erin on this particular item?
So I'd move the council authorize collective bargaining agreement with the Mount Vernon Police Services Guild.
Second?
Thank you. Motion by Mark and a second by Gary. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Erin. Item E tonight is the approval of a resolution regarding our Library Commons Project. Our city attorney, Kevin Rodgerson, is here to present this item.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and members of city council. Just about a year ago, actually, we finished negotiations with the county on exercising or getting an option that we have the right to exercise, the property which the city plans to cite the Library Commons Project. For those of you who don't know, which I don't think is many, I think everybody's pretty well-versed in this. It's the property right across the street from the courthouse being currently used as at-grade parking. As a condition to exercising the option, there is a what's called a condition precedent clause. It's just a fancy legal term saying the city has to do a couple of things before it can exercise its option. And the thing it needs to do that the county had requested is that we have to complete final design. And that design has to be for a project that has a minimum of 240 parking spaces. As we all know, we previously awarded HKP Architects the commission to design the project, and that design is now complete. Attached to this resolution, which memorializes the fact that we have completed final design, that the council is approving final design, is a letter from Julie Blazek, who is a partner with HKP and the project lead, that says, "Yes, indeed. Project is done, and so we're ready to exercise our option." So the proposed resolution files that the city has significantly invested time and funds in the design and construction of the Library Commons Project, cited on the county property, that such design is complete and approved by the city. And the city is at this time prepared to satisfy those conditions precedent within the option agreement to exercise its right, its options of rights with the county. So this would be Resolution 1012. If approved tonight, we can begin the transfer.
All right. Any questions for Kevin on this particular item?
I'd move to approve Resolution 1012.
Thank you. Motion by Gary. I heard Mary and Mark at the same time. We could do co-seconds if you want. All right. With that, is there any discussion? All right. It's been motion and second. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Next up is a second, a one-two on this one. Item F is the approval of a resolution, again, regarding the Library Commons Project purchase and sale agreement with Skagit County. Kevin, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of city council. As you will note, we're not done with trying to get this transfer ripe. In addition to this resolution that you just approved, the purchase and sale agreement that was agreed to between the city and the county that was attached as an exhibit to the option includes that the city council must adopt a resolution formally approving and ratifying said purchase and sale agreement. They're doing so for the purposes, basically, of Section 6 of the agreement, which is the Hazmat risk allocation. So before the seller, which is the county, can trigger its obligations under the agreement, they require you to pass this resolution. So we're asking you to pass it tonight so we can both exercise the option, fully execute the purchase and sale agreement on behalf of the city, attach the resolution, triggering their obligations, and then they'll have within 15 business days to provide us a fully executed purchase and sale agreement. We open up escrow, 30 days from that date, transfer should be complete, or sooner.
Any questions for Kevin on this particular item?
I have no questions. And since I don't, I would move to adopt the proposed resolution as it is in the best interest of the city.
Thank you.
I would second the motion to adopt Resolution 1013.
All right. Motion by Juan and a second by Mark. Any questions? All right. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
So just for posterity's sake, this was a huge hurdle for us in our step toward our Commons Project. For the public, we entered permitting on April 15 of 2022. If all goes well with the federal permitting, we would want to go out to bid in July. And then hopefully, we've got a good estimate, and then we could be breaking ground by September. So a big night tonight. Thanks to HKP and Julie, who's here, and all of our supporters. We really appreciate it. We really appreciate knowing that you're behind us on some of these terrifying, yet wonderful decision-making by council. So thank you for that. And council, thank you. Thank you very much. All right. Last two items tonight. Item G is a street closure for the Mount Vernon High School. Jennifer Burner, Parks and Enrichment Services Director, is here.
Good evening, council. So staff is requesting a street closure for the 2022 Mount Vernon High School graduation parade. It's nice to see all these things coming back, right? So the parade will be held... So the parade will be held on Wednesday, June eighth, 2022, at ten thirty a.m. in the morning. Our police department has worked with the high school to make sure that we have a good route and plenty of people located in the right areas to keep everybody safe. It looks like it's, they've got it figured out to be about a thirty-minute parade. So it will start at the library parking lot, and it will head through town and end at Montgomery and Main. So if staff recommends the temporary closure of South First Street and Cleveland Avenue to accommodate the 2022 Mount Vernon High School graduation parade.
Any questions for Jennifer?
I have no questions. And with that, I would also move for council to approve the street closure request for the 2022 Mount Vernon High School graduation parade.
All right, thank you. Second. Motion by Juan, a second by Mary. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Item H tonight is the approval of a Section 108 guaranteed loan application. Peter Donovan, our special projects manager, is here with this. Peter.
Thank you, Mayor. One of the funding sources that the city has identified for the library commons project is a Section 108 loan guarantee through the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. This is a low-interest loan that is available to Mount Vernon because we are a CDBG entitlement city. Section 108 loans can be used to fund the construction of public facilities, especially those serving low-to-middle-income residents. Council may recall that the city borrowed a million dollars in a Section 108 loan for the flood wall in 2012. That 2012 loan will be paid off this year, leaving the city with about, well, over one point seven million in borrowing capacity in Section 108 funding. The repayment proposal for the Section 108 loan application before council tonight would be funded by taking a hundred thousand dollars each year from the city's annual CDBG entitlement allocation for payback over the next seventeen years. Your action tonight would authorize staff to finalize the details in this application and authorize the mayor to sign and submit this Section 108 loan application to the Department of Housing and Urban Development for a loan in the amount of one point seven million dollars for the Mount Vernon Library Commons Project.
Any questions for Peter on this particular item? Gary?
Peter, when we were doing the one for the flood wall, how much were we paying a year?
With interest, we paid about a hundred eight thousand a year, and that all came from the federal allocation of CDPG funding.
Okay. So we're, it's just kind of a push. Yeah, that's great. All right, thanks. I'd move to approve.
Second.
All right. Motion by Gary, a second by Mark. Yes, go ahead, Mark.
So I went through the application, the draft loan application, well-written application, and I also read the memo itself, but I'm seeking a little bit clarification before we send it to, for approval. And the clarification that I'm seeking is, under the draft application, page one, page two, page two, under project description, the first paragraph there mentions the city of Mount Vernon is requesting a Section 108 loan in the amount of one point eight million. But I know the memo placed at one point seven, so whichever the true number will be, perhaps get it corrected.
Absolutely.
And then so that we can go ahead and pass it through and get it approved.
And this is a, this is a draft application, and it is in our finance department right now for review. Initially, we were hoping to look for one point eight, and so there will be a few of those discrepancies through this draft application. All of those have already been updated since this publication, but thank you for pointing that out. Were there others?
No, that was it. Like I mentioned in the beginning, it's a really well-written application, but I did review through it, and I noticed that that was a difference between the memo and the draft application itself.
Appreciate it.
Peter, maybe just for clarification, we arrive at a certain dollar amount of loan amount based on our entitlement amount from HUD, so it can fluctuate from year to year depending on what our entitlement number is.
That's right. Our formula is five times our last entitlement amount, so less any outstanding balance from previous loans. So we've known the ballpark figure for a while, and when we had a draft, we had to throw some ballpark numbers in. Those will all be updated, cleaned up.
Just so the public knows, this loan will be paid back by basically a federal grant.
Correct.
On an annual basis. So again, it's not, we're not taking money out of the general fund, it's not city-generated taxpayer money that is being used to pay this loan. It's actually a loan that we take against a future grant, and we use the grant to pay back the loan.
And it is very low interest on top of all that.
Awesome. All right. There's a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, dear. That completes our agenda items for tonight. I'll ask our city attorney if there's a need for a second executive session.
There is not.
All right. With that, we will adjourn our meeting at eight thirty-one. If any of our audience would like to stick around for a picture for Twitter, just hang out for a little bit, we'll be there with you. So with that, we'll be adjourned at eight thirty-one. Thank you.